Good evening and welcome to the September 20th meeting of the New Franklin Council. We have one, two, three, four, five first readings and a second reading. We'll start with reading number, first reading resolution number 23R-75. Mr. Stock?
All right, Judy, we're opening up Streets and Drainage Committee at all six o'clock. We have one resolution, 23R-75, a resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with GPP to provide engineering and bidding services for the Cleveland Madison Road Phase Three resurfacing project and declaring an emergency. And that, uh, all is just what we're gonna spend going south now on, uh, Cleveland Madison, correct?
Right. There were three phases to this. Cleveland Madison, the first phase was Clinton's. We weren't involved in that one. And Phase Two has just been completed. Uh, I don't, I think they're about done, I don't know. It may be some tiny enough that, basically, that's-
They actually just pulled the sign. They've been, the signs were up forever about group payment and everything. And they just pulled them down this week, 'cause they go that way to work.
Right.
I was like, how long are they gonna be up, so?
So that covered Vanderhoof to Grill. Uh, Phase Three, uh, is Grill to Clinton. And this is the design and the bidding, um, for that phase. GPP is engineering all these phases in conjunction with ODOT, one of our registered engineers. So, uh, we're, um, recommending that we accept their proposal for the engineering bidding on Phase Three.
So they did the first two things?
Yes.
Yeah, so, yeah, so we're actually going south from our phase, Clinton, and the phase that was south to north, and now we're just gonna connect that together.
Sure looks great out there.
So what, uh, what are they saying for, like, getting this, so they, let's say, they're in there for a bit?
Oh, it's gonna take a while. It's, it's in the, uh, they set these out, uh, and, and this one is set out a couple of years. But the, uh, notion is that, um, oftentimes, if you get the planning and design done, you can advance on the calendar, because other projects that are there aren't quite ready. So, uh, there's not really any, there's no urgency, immediate urgency on this. But on the other hand, once we get the design and plans done, then that, that puts us in, you know, in queue to, uh, to get the work done itself. Guess, guess, 2025?
It's on the books for 2027, but they were hoping if this was all done, the 2025 would be the timeframe or, or, but-
So I'm, I'm gonna be asking to wave in three readings on this to get moving on. And that's all I have for legislation, but I have to say that I've been seeing, there's some pretty good equipment down there on Main Street, that bridge.
Oh, good.
We had to, I was gonna run down just to see how far along it was, but the last few weeks there's been some equipment down there, so at least something, something's going on there.
I thought they had doors going out.
Yeah, I didn't know. I was gonna drive down there and just come back through there. I was gonna head down in there just to see if B sharp, but I didn't go down there, but it, so it's, it's going on.
Yeah, well, it was framing, you know, in the contract, it wasn't until June 2024.
Yeah.
Uh, and then it was, well, maybe they can accelerate it to December of this year. Uh, and, um, they've been able to further accelerate it. So as I mentioned, I think I sent out to you guys, and we got something from the engineer that they're saying late October. Um, people with experience in this have said, well, if it's late November, we'll be happy with that. So at least they're not talking about, you know, late March.
But they're actually, there was, there was construction, uh, just to bring it up. I'll, we're just like, having a call.
That's good, because really, this is the end, middle of September, and, so that's not that much further. Even November, December's not that much further.
No.
So that's a good point. Thank you, David.
All right, I think that's all I have for Streets and Drainage. We're gonna let you close at 6:04. Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution number 23R-76. Mr. Stock?
Hi there.
Hi there.
We will open a finance committee meeting at 6:04 with all members present. And we have resolution 23R-76, which is a resolution establishing extra job detail rates for the New Franklin Police Department. And we kind of talked about this at the last meeting with Chief Vickett, uh, had he plan on doing that. And he's, uh, provided us with, uh, the rates that cities around us charge. So his proposal for the rates that would, uh, increase, starting January 1st, 2024, would be, uh, extra duty, extra job detail rates, uh, from $30 to $40. Traffic control from $35 to $40. Procurement of cruisers going traffic control, a flat fee of $75, and that's not changing. And then funeral escort will go from, uh, $75 to $100. And the last rate increase was February 2022. Anybody have any questions about this?
Uh, my feedback I've got is overdue, uh, for, for bringing this in line with what we're mission.
Right. Again, he, he provided us with, uh, uh, five, six cities around us, and, uh, this will still put us about in the middle of those rates. So it's certainly gonna be the most expensive, but no longer cheapness either.
And is this for extra jobs that are being done outside of the department? Say, like, if they're looking for Springfield or anything?
Yes.
This is not extra jobs that the city is paying for? So this isn't the cost to the city, this is a-
Correct. So if, if somebody, uh, uh, is having an event and they need to hire a police officer to help with, uh, crowd control or, uh-
I just want to make sure we clarify that, and this isn't an increase to the city, this is an increase of services, an increase across the services-
Right.
-for people who need our, our folks.
Right.
Okay. And this isn't leaving the city stranded for the need to have more police officers, this is just when they're on their own time.
Exactly. Yeah, just like we talked about with the Springfield issue in the last couple meetings.
I just wanted to restate it, so it's, it's up to me.
That's good.
We've always been middle of the road for all of our services, as long as I've been there, so-
Right.
At least we're still middle of the road and not below us.
Yeah, yeah, this just puts us right back there in the middle. Okay? Uh, comfortable waving in three on this?
Yes.
All right, again, this will take effect starting January 1st. The next one we have is resolution 23R-77. Mr. Powell?
Yeah, this is a resolution authorizing payment for funds, the Moosebrook LLC, for participation in New Franklin, Ohio EPA water project, and declaring emergency. So I've got a bunch of questions on this one. Uh, so this goes back to 22R-07. If you're not familiar with talking about this, I get concerns about this, it's essentially an open checkbook. So there's no way, means to control our expenditures on this. It is mentioned that there'd be a $100,000 roughly total expense when you figured out the 12 community, or 12 private water systems that are gonna feed him off of this. Uh, right now, from what I found, I think I'm missing one, but I'm not sure, I have, uh, three different private water systems that's tied in, not count the city at all. That would have been Subway, the United Methodist Church, and then the Commonwealth, the medical home on Street. Did the Commonwealths tie in? I can't remember if they did or not.
Uh, I believe they have, but they haven't made any application.
Okay.
So I'm probably not sure about the others, but, uh, these are the only ones that have made application.
So, so then this, this facility here, it's got the five store fronts on it. I believe it's five store fronts.
Correct.
Uh, that makes the fourth, the fourth of the 12 that's tied in. And we had basically set a $100,000 budget for that, and looking at, you know, including this payment that we're looking at right here, we'll, we'll have gone through $73,152 over a $100,000 budget, leaving us eight more locations tied in. Uh, the, the agreement that they have, you have to say, is, well, actually, that's my concern, is with the open checkbook. I mean, do we have, I'm assuming we can get a list set to council of the remaining ones that need to tie in. But where I'd really like to see us go back to is to revisit 2207, maybe bring it back and revise it, and put some, some protective measures in there. Maybe it's something where we have a preferred vendor they use, maybe it's something where we have the proposals come to council before we're into this situation. Because in this one right here, you know, I, I brought this concern back in January of last year, and, uh, I think the, the original quote, if I remember right, was like $12,200 and $152,000. And I, for my own chance, Aqua wanted to do something differently, and that, that could have been addressed had we reached out to Aqua and talked to them, and, and maybe almost put some pressure on it, but there's no reason this could have been done with one line going back to the building, and then tap off a separate corp stop, so we went to each one, and that still had a separate service. Well, they had a building running five separate services back to the building, and that's, that's how we got to where we are now. Uh, I know there's some talk, this is before I was on council, but they discounted the cost to get to the building, as I understand, that's, that was done in order to get those people interested, being part of the grant, get the water, and, you know, that worked out well. But I just want to make sure, this council is a group, we're talking about, how do we fix this? Because on this basic projection, we're looking at, you know, it'd be a couple hundred thousand in this, and some potential, and we had $100,000 on the budget.
At least $290,000.
So what, what are your guys' thoughts as far as how we stop this on board?
I, I have a question, and Mr. Rector's here. Um, how did we end up with this five services to that building? Because that wasn't the original plan, I don't think. And, and how did the debate go with Aqua? Because didn't Aqua decide that on us? Or did, or did the supplier, the, the constructor, figure it out?
Uh, we had communication with Aqua, I know Aqua had communication with the owner. Obviously, it's a successor interest, the original agreement had been drawn with the prior owner.
Oh, okay.
Right. The, uh, um, and the issues with, with the lines, um, had to do generally well, i- i- as you're aware, to be able to have a separate line to each of the potential businesses, three of them required, uh, the-
Backflow.
Backflow, the others didn't. Uh, it makes it possible to service each one of these venues independently. Uh, I would say it's fair to say that it's conceivable it could have been done with one line and, and possibly five meters.
And a backflow.
Yeah, perhaps, uh, let me speak to the, the overall thing, and certainly, I want you to have your questions answered. Uh, I mean, first of all, when we talked about a $100,000 budget, we didn't budget $100,000, because that $100,000 was my estimate that I gave you. So that was not a hard and fast number. We estimated that to be somewhere in the range to, uh, $8,000 per each one. The first, uh, the, the ones that we've paid so far were right around that range. In fact, I think, what did you say, Mr. Powell, we had $74,000, this is $52,000, so that's like $22,000 over the other three people.
Yeah, so for Subway, we, we paid $6,691. The United Methodist Church, we paid, we had two companies, one was $5,901, one was $735. Common Health, our community health, was, uh, $8,415. City Hall, we had the line put in for $14.5, and that took care of the fire department and City Hall. And then we're looking at $52,210 for the, the single location.
Right. So the other vendors, they were all right around that $6,000 to $8,000. Uh, projecting forward, um, I'm not sure what some of the others have done, quite frankly. These are the only ones that have presented, uh, the request for reimbursement.
Right.
Uh, I expect that a couple more have tied in and just haven't made the request. Um, I don't have any reason to believe that any of the others would approach this situation, because they don't have that same-
There, there is one, I think back here just a little ways, it's a four, it's a vertical building that sits back, there's four different-
Who's that?
Oh, Sims Marine.
No, it's, it's not Sims Marine, there's one, it's an office building, before, after Simmons.
No, they weren't part of the project.
Okay, and that's, that's what I'm asking, we don't know who is part of that.
Oh, I'm gonna have to give you, you know, I'll give you a list. They're all a little bit, this is Subway, Dollar General, Speedway, Bell Store, you know, those, and so they were all single entities, where you'd only expect one line. Um, you know, I don't know if they'll come in or not. I, I'm, I'm still comfortable with estimating that if they do come in, they'll be in the range of, now, one of the reasons I think this is higher, we saw the numbers go up, because of supply chain, et cetera. It, it became more expensive to do this a year or two later. But still, I think we can, yeah, I'm comfortable in saying to you that we wouldn't cap more than 8,000 per. Um, if we had eight more come in at 8,000, that's another 64,000 on top of this, 74,000, and now we're at about 140,000. So I think that's probably, not, it's not, it's not 100,000, but it's not 200,000. Um, I think, in the context of this, I, I do not believe we're in a situation where we could go back and amend the previous resolution, because we made representations to these folks that are, they're sitting there.
Well, I'm not saying I'm not gonna pay them.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I just wanted, before you two, I'm sorry about that, but I'm not saying we're not gonna pay them, and we're not gonna change, but we'd like to at least have some sort of a mechanism, whether it is a preferred vendor they use, you know, we can bid out services, we've done this before, where you have a preferred vendor, this guy is the guy you go to to run those water lines, and you know what his price is gonna be, you can control your costs upfront.
Right.
Versus just having anybody that's on your answer phone come out and do that service, and now we're stopped paying for it.
And you'd be happy to know we tried just that.
Okay.
All right. And we had three or four vendors come in here, and we tried to pitch the whole project, because we thought we could get that benefit. None of them were interested. And in fact, many of the vendors, it's, it's been difficult to find people who'd wanna do this work. We reached out to our local vendors, they were not interested. So we gave that a try, Mr. Powell, uh, and it just didn't work. I thought the same thing. Um, I, I wanna, and then I'm gonna speak specifically to, to this one, because we wrestled with this one, and I talked to Mr. Rector at length on this several times, in terms of what we thought might, what, what would be fair, what would be appropriate. Um, we gotta keep in the, this was a $4 million water project, and this is, this 130 or 140 max, right now, if you approve this, we're at 74,000 that the city has spent on this, to get a $4 million water project. We would not have gotten the $4 million water project without our 12 private water systems.
Did you hear the question, Sam?
We had to have them. And that's where the points came from, as, as, Mr. Powell, I know you're aware when you make these applications. Uh, so, um, and kind of, we explained all this, of course, to council, the council was aware of all this, and, uh, and fortunately, we were successful with that, and the first ones came in. So now we have, now we have the plaza up there, and, uh, you know, like, the range of options would be say, listen, we're just gonna reimburse you for one line. Um, here's my thinking on this, and here's why, and, and when I met with Mr. Rector, it was, was it gonna be one line, was it gonna be compromise, make it three lines, is it gonna be five lines, you know, you know, what's, what's the right thing to do? The reason I suggested the full reimbursement is for several. Number one, um, we don't have a whole lot of commercial entities here. Uh, we drive by a lot of little strip malls that are empty and are not well taken care of. This is a nice piece for us. And not only is it a nice piece, but we got an owner who's pumped a lot of money in there. Uh, you guys have seen it when you drove by, you know, the parking lot, the roof, uh, getting tenants in here. Um, I know I'm a little bit off target on it, but if, if my thinking, as I went through this, you know, we're in a situation, every city's in a situation where they're trying to provide incentives to try to get businesses to come in. And here we have an owner that's, that's putting together a really nice parcel, uh, right in the heart of our old commercial core builder, um, at his expense. And, and this is a separate expense that, that he believed, I guess, was, was, he was best served that way, that way he can, there's no question about the metering, he can build each one, if there's a problem to shut off, they can each one be shut off. Um, that's what, from a business standpoint, it made no sense to him. So I thought, well, I could come to you and say, do we give him 8,000, do we give him 35,000, do we give him the 52,000? I mean, I said, I, I know it's a lot of money, I get that. But at the end of the day, as I, as I, as I, you know, chammed all this through, I said, you know, here's a guy who's doing, making a really good investment here in the city, uh, and, you know, let's reward that. Uh, and it's really not reward, I mean, he pays more. So that's, that's where I came from on it, you know, that was my thinking on it, but I respect you guys', you know, uh, your discretion as to whether or not you wanna proceed at that rate, or if you wanna try to, um, have some juice for it.
So, yeah, I, I hear what you're saying, and I'm not saying that Mr. Rector did anything wrong, he did what was in his contract, what he's able to do, and that, there's nothing wrong with that. My, I guess my take on this is, let's try to be proactive instead of reactive. We're being reactive right now by just paying to build what's already done. Let's try to be proactive on this, go back to those remaining eight people, say, hey, before you do this, we're still gonna pay for it, because we, we're obligated to that. Before you do that, come to us with some estimates, and, and in a situation like with Mr. Rectors, we could have had some conversations with Aqua Ohio. They developed their own engineering standards, there's no reason they couldn't run a section supplying to the back, and tapped off of corp stops at that, and hit each one of those bones, or they could have had a common utility room, and then plumped out of their head in the heated area with all their, their back flows and stuff. There's things we can do on our end.
I mean, Aqua wouldn't have been doing that. Aqua-
I wonder what it said yes or no for how they, they piped it in.
No, I mean, it asks whether or not it was feasible, why get it?
Right. That's, if you had that permission from Aqua, they could have potentially run one line back there and tapped off of it, and it would have reduced this down probably by half, if not more. So let's try to be proactive on this stuff, reach out to the, the remaining eight, and have, have some agreement with them, where they come to us before they get the work done, if they're wanting to reimburse, and at least give us a heads up on it, if there's something we can do to help mitigate that cost and reduce it, we do that.
Makes sense.
Kevin, can I?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, I got, I got a question for you.
Uh, I showed them a real-
What's the name?
Sorry, Steve Rector.
Work name.
I mean, I, I did try to suggest that to Aqua, almost a man or four back there to run those off of, or I even didn't have a closet that would have been available to them for that, and they, they didn't approve it, even though we tried to sketch it out and do those sorts of things, um, so.
And that's a common practice, doing that, having a common room.
I was, I was surprised.
Yeah, it's absolutely a common practice, that's where I think if we were to reach out to Aqua, everyone's in control of their engineering standards, there's just no reason they couldn't have accepted something like that.
They just wanted to take it some bigger portion.
Right.
What we're suggesting.
Anybody else have any comments, questions?
Well, I think, I think we're, uh, uh, we're a little sticker shock at the, at the price, uh, and that's because we're looking at individual properties, not individual businesses. And in this case, we have five individual businesses that are benefiting from, and as Mr. Anderson said, this is a $4 million project that we're getting for less than $150,000, uh, or approximately, hopefully less. Um, so I, I think we, we kind of, you know, like, again, sticker shock, and if these would have come in separately, we, we probably would not have been so concerned about it. But it is one property, and we did, the agreement is for one property and one line going back. So the question is, do we, um, do we understand, do we accept that it's five separate businesses, and, uh, and as Mr., uh, as Mr. Merrill was saying, that we support the local business owner, uh, property owner, uh, or do we, um, say, no, our, our agreement was one line? Uh, I, I think we, we support our business, I think we support our property owner, and, uh, and I'm comfortable approving this. Again, I, I understand the sticker shock on it, but if, if they would have been separate businesses. And with the other businesses that have yet to ask for reimbursement, again, we're only looking, we're looking at single businesses on those properties, so they'll, they will be single lines. This is a unique situation, and, uh, and I, I think this is the proper way to handle it.
I agree with Jim. Yeah, I, I don't think we're contesting the concept of paying for this, and I totally agree with the argument, you've done a nice job with that plaza, I mean, it looks good, it dressed up a piece that needed dressed up, we know that about. I think the concern is just a little over the test.
Exactly. Yeah, my, my concern is not, you know, not paying or anything along those lines. I agree, he's done wonderful things with the facility over there. It's how do we prevent any future sticker shock? And there's some simple things we can do on our end that prevent that, it's just being proactive is all I'm suggesting, and how do we do that?
I'll give a list to council of the remaining businesses. I'll get that to you in a moment.
It would be interesting to see why Aqua disallowed that. I think they probably had a valid reason, and that might help people.
You, it's, um, you're not wrong, it's, they're a big animal, it's sometimes it's just, it's hard to get the right person in the right place and try and get the right answer, they're busy with, as Mr. Rector was saying.
We have severely struggled with communication.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, with the EPA, as far as capping off the well that's there, they haven't been returned to EPA's calls, which I would think would be a priority for Aqua, but it's been a good shock.
But I think that would solve the problem, because that, that answers the question. They would not approve it.
I don't think we'll wave this tonight and look forward and give Mr. Rector credit.
Yeah, yeah, I have no issue with it. Does anybody else have any questions on 23R-77? All right, everybody okay, a couple waving for three of us?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Powell.
Thank you, guys.
Uh, next is resolution 23R-78, a resolution authorizing transfer of funds from the general fund to the police district fund and declaring an emergency. Y'all heard this before, right?
This is all a lot, Jim.
This is new to us, so, right, this is, uh, you know, what we do, uh, throughout the year, uh, again, from the general fund to the police district fund in the amount of $200,000.
And if people, you know, we do it all the time, and that's the extra money that came in for the extra 1% in income tax, went to the general fund, and at that point, years ago, we said some of that money was gonna go back into the police district.
Right, and then the police doesn't really have a, a levy that pays for it, so, so the police has paid out the general fund.
I'm just bringing that up, because there might be some people like, you do that all the time, what is that exactly, so? That's exactly what it is.
Okay. Comfortable waving three?
Yes, sir.
Fantastic. We will move on to resolution 23R-79, a resolution authorizing additional appropriations to the 2023 annual operating appropriation budget and declared an emergency. And this is going to be, uh, additional appropriations of $100,000 for admin contractual, $361.95 for better road bridge contractual, $2,000 for law enforcement trust contractual, and $83,905.95 for street lighting electricity. And I've invited, um, our finance director, Ms. Cook here, to, uh, provide us with information on all this.
Um, well, I'll just go through them and explain to you, that, it's pretty simple. Um, the admin contractual, as you know, we've been taking on more projects and more engineering, so, and, and $52,000 in, in helping Mr. Rector, so we're gonna need a few more appropriations in the general fund to, to take care of some of these extra things, and we were not over our certificate at all yet, so we're just adding some, some, uh, further appropriations to the general fund. Better road bridge, this is the last one for the pass-through. This one was lingering, um, and they just, they just recently, ODOT just recently finished this payment to CTL, so we have to show it on our books. So, you seen this again, God willing?
Put my mom to the bill, so then I did the bill to bridge.
Yeah, and, well, the last of it was CTL, who was the administrator, and so that, it just, it got, it lagged behind, but this is the last one, so this is just pass-through, it's not actual cash, but we have to be able to do this. Law enforcement trust, trust fund, that's just a, that one's just a technical one, I'm just trying to, uh, to bring the appropriations in line with our certificate, so that we're in line with that. The street lighting one is, is, um, this Summit County, when they sent us our special assessment, our first special assessment, um, amount, they sent us a check for way more, in fact, $83,905.95, more than they should have, and so we had to pay that back. And, and so to do that, then, obviously, we never intended there to be $83,000 in net fund, so we have to at least show that, and I'm also getting the certificate updated, so that we can reimburse the county for that amount. It was a county error, but we have to pay it back. Which we, we have paid it back, but we paid it back through the general fund, now we need to make that correction to pay it out of there. Does that explain it?
Yes, sir. Questions? Comments? Comfortable waving three? Okay, we will close the finance committee at 6:28. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. We have a second reading ordinance number 23O-01. Mr. Webb?
Uh, law ordinance committee would like to open at 6:28. Uh, we have a second reading for ordinance number 23O-01, an ordinance to amend Articles 1, 2, and 3 of the New Franklin zoning code. one, two, and three of the new Franklin zoning code. I'd like to open it up for conversation. I know we've had some concerns with, uh, the number of days for notifications. We've also had a few concerns on some of the verbiage. Um, so I thought it would be, um, good for us to, uh, have a discussion and I would like to ask for more time.
Sorry, I don't remember. You have a question there?
Um, well, I'd just like to say that the fourteen days at least gives you a little bit more cushion rather than the ten for all the notifications that are in there. Um, there was also, uh, section two hundred point two, B, two, B, um, has a section in there that doesn't seem to make sense. It's under the zoning act amendment, which is where you change the zoning of the parcel, turn something to something else. And it talks about issuing a proposed permit. So I, I think that paragraph in there might, you might want to look at it and see if it really belongs there.
Looks like it was like from conditional use section or something.
What's the section mean?
Um, two hundred point two, B, two, B.
I'll take a look at it. I'm sure. I mean, I'm sure it was, you know, the planning zoning committee, i- if it's missed, everybody missed it before it got here, so.
It's, it's a lot of, a lot of paperwork to do.
A lot to read.
So we're in committee. What were your guys' thoughts on increasing the notifications to fourteen days, a little bit ten? My concerns was if you're on vacation, you could easily eat up those ten days when you figure in the two weekends.
I agree.
Ninety days.
Yeah, I think fourteen days is fine. I personally don't think it's really necessary because of the signs. I think the big change is we're going to have to sign that sign. Everybody in the neighborhood's phone is going to blow up. But I, but I'm moving fourteen.
But I'm, I'm probably going to lose if you're out of town.
Right, right.
You know, basically a weekend to leave Friday and come back the following. As long as that's nine days.
I don't think that's going to make it very.
It's not.
Correct, yeah.
Can we get a little cushion for the mail delivery?
That's true.
How do we go about adjusting this? Will we, will we adjust the language in the title? It's easy, but will we actually make a change to the document? Will it have to be re-proposed or can we just continue to say as amended?
If we can continue as amended, the council has the authority to either, uh, accept the recommendation for planning and zoning, or deny the recommendation, or modify.
Or modify, okay. So we don't have to start the process over.
Right. So, uh, what I'm going to suggest is I'll refer this back and, uh, and see if I make the corrections and do a red line or something and have that available.
As long as we get to see what we actually approved.
Sure.
That's the final.
Well, I mean, if we take four readings, five readings, I don't think it's an issue. So we just want to make sure it's right and valid. We both agree.
You're right.
Especially because it helps you come to that bit of the story.
We have ninety days.
Right. We got ninety days from the time it's submitted or once we have the submission from planning and zoning.
I will say that with my experience with like the handbooks and with contracts and what have you, whenever you put that timeframe, like fourteen days or whatever, the same throughout, it's not so much easier.
Yeah, uniform.
Yeah, yeah.
I see that. I'll get the right day. I'll get the exact date. We're, I mean, obviously we've got plenty of time to find it. But then they had to submit it to us. And it was submitted, um, maybe ten days later or so.
Eighteen, I think it was.
It definitely was, yeah. I'll, I'll give you the exact dates on that. But we, we're in good shape, guys.
So you're going to find out about the question we had at this point?
Yes. Uh, and, um, I'm not sure exactly, uh, how often the ten days is cited. I'll have to ask him to go back and look. I, I guess what we're talking about is anywhere it says ten days, we want to go to fourteen days. Is that what you want to do?
Yeah, I think that's.
No, the planning commission sent this over.
Yeah.
They recommended that the ten days, the whole planning commission. But what do you want to do? Which ones do you want to make fourteen?
Well, I support fourteen. I, I think it's.
No, even the ten. The ones, the sections that you want to switch from ten to fourteen. Is it anywhere throughout here that it says ten days?
Yeah, I thought we're trying to.
I just want to be clear on that. I didn't know.
I thought one was going to be the change.
Yeah, okay.
Unless there was a specific section that for some reason, and it's, boy, this will be a problem if it's more than ten days for some reason. But I don't believe there is.
I, I don't either. And if there is, I'll bring it back to you.
So as counsel, we can, we can make these changes, uh, even though planning and zoning gave us their recommendation, we can change it however we like.
Yes.
And vote on without their input.
Correct.
Okay.
So you're saying we can make it more or less?
Yeah.
Let me do it there again.
Right.
We can amend it however we see fit.
Okay.
And hopefully still be elected.
Well, this, this is a good test, you know, test run because there's going to be a lot of zoning changes coming down the road.
Could have reworked.
This will help.
I've been through some zoning stuff in my last ninety-two years, so this is pretty mine.
Well, well, let's keep in mind that there, uh, ideally, there's not going to be zoning changes. There, we're, we're rewriting the code to make it more user friendly. There may be some adjustments, but I, I think when we say zoning changes, that, uh, sets up, you know, red flags. Oh, my gosh, a lot of things going to happen. And, and it's, there's nothing, um, critical like that or shouldn't be anything critical.
There will be some changes to deal with current problems.
Right.
Like going from thirty to ten or the setback that was proposed, uh, for late front properties. So there are going to be some of those, but a lot of it's going to be just clarification, you know?
Right. And that's what we need to keep an eye on because again, we're not looking for, for y'all to make those type of changes at this point. Uh, we're just looking to make, make the code easier and better, uh, for everybody to use. Uh, so we're, we're not looking to, you know, and so we need to keep an eye on for, for anything that may get slipped in there.
Changes unintentional.
Intentional or unintentional.
Right, exactly, exactly. So.
Chicken's going to be brought up during this?
Yes.
And.
They'll be gone by then.
And if that's the case, if, you know, and Mr. Stock, you bring up an excellent point. If that's the case, that, I don't believe that should be a part of right now. That should be a separate. So I, I don't believe that we should be seen through this, uh.
Process started out with the streamlining, right, and that change. And we. Like if early, it's like, wait a minute, and we were just trying to streamline.
Is that, do I have to work on it?
And even previewing what's covered, Article six, um, Article four is in matrix. And what's acceptable in those districts. We've already stumbled on a couple, a couple times already that guys. Barely into one of those. So. There's two pages of it, several boxes. Uh, and, and this is. Involved in it and then take a little planning and zoning. Uh, so I, I now have to go back and start correcting those boxes. Get it in form first, then come back with the second phase and, and start.
Understand that when we do propose those, they'll be easier for people to digest.
In regards, we see that. When you compare it to whatever, you know, so we're going to have a better, insured, better product. I'd like to ask for more time.
And now, since basically, we just did a generic outline, the procedures in place to protect the city against fraud. Because if we talk, I talked in length about that, so better to just put the subject matter that we discussed rather than try to pick out this or that, if that's okay with you.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes from September sixth meeting as amended.
No, second.
Thank you.
Have a first and a second, Kelly.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. And I'd like to make a motion to approve the financials for August two thousand twenty-three, subject to bottom.
Second.
Have a first and a second, Kelly.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Motion passes. Is there any comment from the, um, public at all? Anyone here tonight that has anything they'd like to say? All right, I'm taking your two words. Coming, our first reading is Resolution number twenty-three R-75.
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with G P D to provide engineering and bidding services for the Cleveland Maslin Road Base Three resurfacing project and declaring an emergency.
Yeah, we discussed this during the streets of Greenwich Committee. Basically, we just, our, our first part was the, like, from Norton back to Grill. And then Clinton did their section, which was north to south, or south to north. And now it's just that in between. And this is for the engineering. And I'm going to ask to wave the three readings on this given room. So that's.
We have a first and a second, Kelly.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-three dash R-dash seventy-five.
Second.
Have a first and a second, Kelly.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes. Motion passes. Her next resolution is Resolution number twenty-three R-76.
A resolution establishing extra job detail rates for the New Franklin cleaning department.
This resolution is assigned to the finance committee. We move to wave the three readings on Resolution twenty-three R-76.
Second.
Have a first and a second, Kelly.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
We move to adopt Resolution twenty-three R-76.
Second.
We have a first and a second, Kelly.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Motion passes. Resolution number twenty-three R-77, Kelly.
A resolution authorizing payment of funds to Moose Brook LLC for participation in the New Franklin, Ohio EPA water project and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to the finance committee. We move to wave the three reads on Resolution twenty-three R-77.
Second. We have a first and a second, Kelly.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
We move to adopt Resolution twenty-three R-77.
Second.
Have a first and a second, Kelly.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Motion passes. Resolution number twenty-three R-78, Kelly.
A resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from the general fund to the police district fund and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to the finance committee. We move to wave the three readings on Resolution twenty-three R-78.
Second. We have a first and a second, Kelly.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
We move to adopt Resolution twenty-three R-78.
Second. We have a first and a second, Kelly.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next resolution, Kelly, is twenty-three R-79.
A resolution authorizing additional appropriations to the two thousand twenty-three annual operating appropriation budget and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to the finance committee. We move to wave the three readings on Resolution twenty-three R-79.
Second. We have a first and a second, Kelly.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
We move to adopt Resolution twenty-three R-79.
Second. We have a first and a second, Kelly.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Motion passes. The next rea, the next reading is an ordinance number twenty-three O-zero-one.
An ordinance to amend Articles one, two, and three of the New Franklin zoning code.
This ordinance is assigned to Law and Ordinance Committee, and I'd like to ask for more time.
Time was requested, so time will be granted. We have no third readings and no pending registration, so it's our favorite time of the meeting, Paul. We're up again.
All right, here we go. Uh, all right, we had a busy week with, uh, with meetings. The Tudor House met on Monday and the Parks met last night. Uh, at the Tudor House, uh, the, uh, we're having discussions about, uh, some, as the next phase, the next scheduled phase is the, uh, event center, uh, that will be built on the, um, what was the northern edge, but now it's right next to the extra four acres that we got, where the garage sits. Uh, however, through the summer, and actually in the spring, uh, and more recently lately, we've talked about the possibility of some further enhancement or, or, uh, work down there at the lakeside patio. And specifically, uh, something in the form of a, um, a glass conservatory type of look to, to enclose that patio. Um, considering, looking far and wide at the various options, um, everything that's been considered up to this point would be first class and beautiful, like everything else that's been done out there. Uh, and I won't go into great detail. Uh, there are a few of these around the country. There's one in Mansfield. Uh, they have, um, different, um, potential, uh, aspects. Some of them have louvered areas that can be raised and lowered. Uh, some of them have o- automatic sensors where if the temperature gets to a certain, uh, reaches a certain point, the door's closed. You can, and use fans with these. So it looks like it's, it's, it could be done. Um, we're in the phase of giving that some consideration. Uh, we think that it would, uh, enhance the, uh, the enjoyment out there for a variety of reasons. Um, you know, the tent is nice, but it'd be nice to have a really nice glass. When you see some of these, you're going to say, that would really be neat down there. Uh, so, uh, we think that would be helpful there. We're hopeful that, uh, it would, uh, alleviate some of the sound concerns, uh, that some residents have that were sensitive to. Um, but we just think it'll be a nicer look. Uh, and, uh, so we're looking in that direction. Uh, when, when they're, when, uh, we're going to try to make the, and when I say we, I mean collectively, we'll try to bring something to you along those lines, um, you know, by fall, you know, and, uh, so that we'd be in a position to decide what course we're going on. And, and, uh, um, I mean, if it's the event center, then we probably would be into, uh, the weather's going to depend on, uh, whether we get that thing up prior to the next season. If we go with this glass conservatory, probably something that could be erected within that timeframe. So when I have something more detailed, which I hope to have probably within thirty days, uh, I'll share that with everybody. Um, I'm telling you, if you see some of these things.
Where would we see them, Paul?
Well, would, where would you see? I, I, I'll, uh.
weddingwire.com. I, I just, uh, I just Googled, uh.
Is this a good e-girl?
Glass enclosure of event centers.
Okay, tell me the, the.
And you, you talked about the.
Yeah, I'm listening, yeah.
In Highlandville, Missouri.
Oh, I love it. Tell me the webpage, wedding.
Road trip? Is that where our next meeting is at?
I think I'd like it.
Your sites and I'll send them to you.
We will love it.
I'll have sent you.
Well, the first one I clicked on is weddingwire.com. And that's three house wedding venues.
Oh, that sounds beautiful.
Yeah.
It really does.
It could really be nice. All right, speaking of the Tudor House, the Oktoberfest is coming up, Sunday, October fifteenth, from noon to six. We're going to have all the regular stuff. There'll be the Beer Garden there. Except it'll be even nicer. We're going to have hay rinds for the kids. There's going to be food trucks. We have German family dancers. We've got the polka band. We've got, we're going to have axe throwing. Except it's an inflatable thing with, as everybody took it, I'll grow it up. So we're going to have that. And we're going to have, and there's going to be some, the Porterslake Library is coming out with some activities for the kids. And then we're also going to have, we're going to do the pumpkin decorating again. And we'd like to have about fifty pumpkins, not gigantic ones, like this size. Basketball? Yeah, volleyball, volleyball sized. Yeah. So we need about fifty of them. So if anybody on council has, anybody who has some pumpkins that they want to get to us, please let us know. Because there's plenty of pumpkins out there, so maybe we'll get donations on the pumpkins.
Or even donations to buy the pumpkins.
Mr. Powell, if you're out, I'm looking right at you. So if you can help with that, that'd be nice. If we get more than fifty, good, because we're going to have a lot of kids there. And they have a lot of fun with that. We put them all in a pumpkin patch, and then they come and pick their pumpkin, and then we've got the utensils and stuff for them to decorate the pumpkins. Maybe next year we start a pumpkin patch there. Contest, you know, for the best decorations. But anyway. We don't have a pumpkin eating contest. All right, let me see what else we have. There's some work going on out front here, some in soda and water. Got some grant money. They're cleaning out the cattails and everything on the pond out front. And we revised the trail around that a little bit, so that's happening right now. The police are going to submit a grant for, there's a state grant. I can't remember if it's a state or federal, for body cams. And so the police are applying for that. It is a zero-match grant. So, and we're off. That's the one we got. So we don't need a resolution because it's not a match, but I wanted to keep you advised and let you know how that goes. We're trying to get some body cams for the guys. Get some updated ones for them. All right, let's see. We've got, we are continuing funding pursuits for the sewer project. I've got a Zoom Friday with the Ohio EPA. The OPWC application is in. We've done a good job. We have really pretty much everybody's attention, the Department of Development, and we're getting in every pot we can, so I will keep you advised in that regard as well. And when it's time for a chorus of, let's do this, I'll ring the bell for everybody. The Parks Commission are working on a couple of things. We got some price estimates and cost estimates for the swings at the Grill Park. We, Kevin Noble's putting together a request for proposals for a pavilion, twenty-four by thirty. It is not going to have a lot of the amenities that Sisler did. We're not really, I don't think we need the electric over there at this point in time. We can always do that later. So we're going to send that out for some proposals. The intention is that we get that pricing for the swings and the pavilion, and that would be the beginning of next year's projects. So that would come out of next year's budget in the Parks. In addition to that, we're also looking at Sisler, some type of playground equipment at Sisler as well. Probably, perhaps where that volleyball court is sitting right now, where nobody plays well in the line. And so we may, we got some good prices on these swing sets. Maybe in the range of twelve thousand dollars, which sounds like a lot, but not bad. And so if we can get some, you know, modest playground equipment there as well, we'll try to do that. And maybe more exciting is, you know, take the hard look and get some pre-planning done on a walking trail at Sisler. I think we talked about that before. But there's a lot of interest, and people are walking it already just on their own. So the Parks Commission is going to be, well, actually, our next Parks meeting, we're going to meet up there at Sisler and do some walk-throughs. We're getting the Google map of what it looks like, so. That's one that, once we get that, we can do some preliminary planning on that, get some cost estimates for the crushed limestone or whatever, you know, we might put down there. I think that would be an attractive OPW, or Natureworks, grant project. Perhaps for the whole thing, with some swings and playground equipment and a trail there. So we haven't kicked their pocket for, you know, almost two years now since the tennis court, so. They should be, they'll be ready to give us some money. All right, let's see. We are still waiting. I haven't checked the last several days. I think we're still, we're still waiting, to my knowledge, on the AED cabinets. We're getting pricing on the lighting and the cameras. We're trying to do that in, you know, at the same time, so we're working on that and going as fast as we can to get that up. The State of the County, I think the county executive, I mean Shapiro, that's going to be Thursday, October twelfth. We have reserved a table for the city. When we've been to that, some of you have been to that, and it's just an impressive thing to have the city's presence. I've heard from two council that are able to make it. I know a lot of people working are not able to make it. If anybody else on council is interested, please let me know by the end of the week, and then we're going to use the remaining seats for our department heads. And, you know, some of the seconds will get to come if you guys don't, so, you know, I hope that you don't. It's Thursday, Thursday. What time? October twelfth. It starts at eleven-thirty, and it's over about one-thirty. So see if you can do that. And it's really, it's an informative one. Part of this, the first phase of the sewer, you guys just have to hear me talk about it, is about ten point three million dollars. We got three million in federal, and then we got three point five million that the county's committed to that. And I was at the last State of the County, and when they were all done, I mean Shapiro does a fabulous job. She talked about it. I was going around the county, and she said, hey, the city's, there's a lot going on. We did this in Green. We did this in Peninsula. Here's what we did in Macedonia. And I kept waiting to hear New Franklin, didn't hear anything, so I, you know, I sent something to them. It was in the paper, too. And I said, so they said, everybody but New Franklin wins our turn. So this year, I'm sure we've been talking about the three and a half million that's going to go towards our sewer project. So that's good stuff. You're making notes out of it. Painting is nearly completed. A little work left to be done. I think the, I did a nice job in the parking lot. It was a little tricky, but everybody's pretty happy with it. And let me see, I think the very last thing I'm going to say is the, I've had some good feedback with people that have contacted the Southern County Fiscal Office to question their property appraisals. That they've had detailed conversations. They've received suggestions from the fiscal office as what type of information that a property owner could provide that might reduce that property valuation. And I know I put something on our website. I don't know if I talked, I can't remember if I talked about it in here two weeks ago, but earlier, we had heard, everybody says this is unofficial, and so that's the way I presented it. That those, that the tax increases, we know they're not, they're not commensurate with the property valuation increase, because a lot of people got thirty, forty, forty percent increases in their property values. Probably some of you guys said that there, some of you folks. That the, that the property tax increases were going to be in the five to eight percent. I was, I heard from another sources, and I thought was pretty reliable, and said, I don't know about that, you know, it may be fifteen to twenty percent. Particularly in certain areas. They said, we're one of those areas. Conventry is one of those areas. Coventry Township is one of those areas. And part of that was explained to me, the whole valuation thing. They only used one year of comps instead of three. When mortgage rates were real low, property values, you know, people were getting, they'd list their house, and they'd get an offer higher than their listing price. We all know this. And so it's really considered kind of a loser, but that's what happened in certain areas. And this was a popular area because there weren't that many houses. People wanted to live here. And so there were some inflated numbers that probably over a three-year span wouldn't hold. But they did. So I just want to again encourage anybody who's interested to make that application.
I had a video meeting with them last week to go over my situation. And I don't know the results yet. They'll send me a letter next month to tell me. But the person I spoke with was very professional, was very helpful, very easy to talk to. I was nervous going in there because I hadn't appealed before, and it was a very comfortable situation. And it only lasted about ten or fifteen minutes, you know, a very basic property. But it was a very easy thing, so if anybody feels, you know, it might be a little intimidating or whatever, they, again, the person I dealt with was very friendly, very helpful. Asked the questions, asked the easy questions, and I honestly don't think anything's going to change, but still, the process itself was very comfortable. Do that, sign up for a video conference.
That's it. Thanks. I'm sorry.
Paul, you've covered a lot of territory, a lot of really good things. Actually, you do. Do you have anything to add on the comprehensive stuff, like?
We do. The report, the draft report was provided to the steering committee members. If you guys want to make any comments to it, I thought in the, I literally could not dedicate more than about ten minutes to reading it, so I flew through it. I thought it looked okay at the very first glance. I'm a little bummed that our next meeting is Zoom, so we put all of this work into this, and now we're not even going to meet face-to-face. And we don't ever seem to get any input on that. It's just, that's what we have to do, I guess, so. It's next Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, thirteen is not due. You know, I don't know if we overdid our budget, or I don't know, I don't know. They've done too good a job trying to stay hands-off on this. I haven't even seen the draft yet. And I was not aware that's, so is that the one with the consultant? Yes, they, well, they set them all. Okay. We asked for, we asked for communication, more regular feedback, because the members just keep dropping off, but I think a lot of it is just stays stale and quiet for long periods of time, just nothing. I'm not sure. I'll look into that. It's already scheduled for when next year? It's already scheduled for Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, at five-thirty. And I don't know if there is a way, honestly, for, I have, I'm still getting used to the new email. When I accept an invite, it deletes it from my inbox, which I don't completely understand, because there's a whole bunch more information here. But it's seven to nine P M.
If it puts it on your calendar, then all the information you need will be on your calendar if you click.
Except for the, except for the attachment.
You can also go to your sent folder, and it'll be in there.
Oh, because it's sent, okay. Well, you said, you said five-thirty or seven? I'm sorry. I said five-thirty at first, but it's actually seven to nine P M. On the twenty-sixth. And I, like I said, I would hope they're the way that the public could at least watch the game. So, yeah, that's all we have.
Thank you.
Everything's pretty much as steps go right now. We're actually working on trying to finalize a lot of the grants and get them, you know, get reversed and our normal things. And of course, the audit is nearing completion, so you'll hear more about that once they actually finish. They just put, because we had whatever the seven hundred fifty thousand limit for federal funds, they did a single audit as well, which they're putting on the federal website, but they haven't completed that yet because I have to okay it once it's put up there and make it all done, but that's not done yet. So we're getting close, but we're not all the way done. Lastly, I'm going to make a plug for Coventry, but it includes Manchester, too. Next month's Monday at Porterslake State Park, Coventry's having their first invitational cross-country meet. Manchester is going. Obviously, Coventry is going. My grandson runs Coventry Cross Country, so I'll be there, but, yeah, if you're interested in supporting them, it'll be great. The high schoolers and the middle schoolers will all be running, so if you need to know the timeline, you know, I can look it up on my phone, but I think they're starting, the girl, middle school girls start at either three-thirty or four. And then the races are, you know, as soon as one race gets done, fairly soon after that, the next one will start, but they're all scheduled. But it'll be, it'll be their first invitational, and so we hope that it's one of more to come, because we need to bring some of these. Because I know with Manchester, it's Katie, her daughter's running cross-country, so we're always looking at each other and we, and talking about scores, and they go to a few different ones than we do, but they do some that are the same. And there's just always, we always want to see more of those invitationals that are local so that our kids can run.
And Susan, where is it and when is it?
It is Monday. See, that would be the twenty-fifth at the Porterslake State Park.
And is that time?
I think if, I think the first race starts around three-thirty, but don't quote me if you need to know the exact time. I'd have to look at my phone because I do have that information. But Manchester schools will be there, as well as Coventry is putting it on, so it'll be fun. It's fun to watch the kids run. The runs don't take that long. In fact, you know, they're doing seven-minute and below miles, and the middle schoolers only do two miles, so it's fun. I've had a lot of fun watching my grandson run.
Always fun doing that. Thank you, Susan.
I've forgotten one. It's a really, really,
Big thing.
Great one. The Navy eighty-three, I think I sent something out to you guys. The Navy eighty-three Bike Across America is a wonderful event where these, I think there's sixteen of them. These guys are all graduates of the Naval Academy of nineteen eighty-three. The literature says, you know, some of them were submarine captains, some of them were ship captains. Two or three of them had reached rear admiral, and they started in Washington, the state of Washington. Dipped their tire in the Pacific, and this is about a thirty-five hundred mile bike trip over, I think, about forty days, and they're going to end up in Annapolis, Maryland. And their route, they contacted us a couple, a month or two ago, and said their route was going to bring us close by, were we interested in getting to have a lunch with them. And so we've been working on that. It's going to be out at the Tudor House. We just got some info today. Now, they expect to be right around twelve forty-five or one o'clock Thursday. And they're going to come to the Tudor House. That's tomorrow. No, excuse me, next Thursday, twenty-eighth. We would love to have the, you know, the lanes, you know, full of people to welcome them when they get in. They're raising money for, each one of them has a separate charity that they're raising money for, and they're all military-related, and it's fabulous stuff. One of the things they're doing is highlighting the tragic number of military suicides. And they start each day of riding with twenty-two push-ups to represent the twenty-two veterans who lose their life to suicide. According to their literature, every twenty-four hours. Yeah, yeah, it's horrible. So they're really raising consciousness, and we have our late's Delian Dogs and Mandino's Pizza are donating their lunches. So we'll have a nice luncheon spread there. They have food for them, and really looking forward to meeting these guys. And some of them have family traveling with them as well, so we'll do our best to publicize that and get the word out. We're going to reach out to different churches, the veterans organizations. We're, of course, letting the press know, and we're going to invite county officials as well and make the big deal out of it that it should be. This would really be the only stop in Southern County.
That is quite a long.
Yeah, it really is.
It really is.
Yeah, so we're going to do a nice thing. So that'll be next Thursday at the Tudor House. As of now, it's twelve forty-five, but we'll keep updating you on the, they're going to let us know when they're leaving Losworth, and we'll try to give you the exact time. Thanks.
Thank you, Paul. Do we have any old business? None?
I don't know.
Okay.
I'm going to get it back open. I was looking at something else with the,
Oh, that's okay. I just couldn't move my shot.
I'm going to have to switch it up like did when I bring my computer, so. It is a little better trying to do it on the phone. I have a letter from the citizen from Miss Grimbeak about Vought Press Road, that she asked me to read. This is to Mayor Anderson and Council about property cleanup at five eighty-six Vought Press Drive. My husband and I would like to thank you for all your efforts recently with regard to the cleanup of Moose's property. It certainly looks much better, and we're hopeful that the property will remain in adequate condition as time moves forward. I spoke with a few of the neighbors, and they in turn are very happy that this monumental task was finally completed. Knowing that, oh, we got pictures, too. Knowing that much had to be done and the steps taken before removal of any of your items that cluttered the property, we're appreciative of all your efforts. We're hopeful that Mr. Moose will abide by whichever regulations have been forthcoming, and that he and his family will keep the property free and clear of freighters, boats, and other large items that were terribly eyesores to our allotment. Again, many thanks to all that you have recently accomplished. Margaret, there's been interrupting and stuff. Thank council support of that as well. The other thing I have on whole business, the six nineteen project. Anything new on that? Any discussion that I also kind of want to throw out that we had some conversation about getting community buy-in, getting a team of people that are involved with the process. As that process happens, I really hope you'll keep us in the loop, even if it's not council meeting night. I'm the mayor, or the chair of the Community Development Committee, so I'd like to, I would really like to be involved, and I know there's a lot of people in that stretch that would like to be involved. No, and I hope we're doing a good job of that, of trying to keep you council informed as best we can, but so. From, first of all, we haven't had anything presented to us from the developers as far as at that end. And that's really sort of the first step to the whole project. That's, because then, well, we'll see what the finances are. We'll see what they have in mind. And see what provisions they made in terms of infrastructure to that point, and then we'll resume those conversations with Southern County about trying to extend that infrastructure to the west side. that infrastructure to the, um, west side of the channel. Um, I have not had any more conversations relative to any pre-planning for that 619 corridor, it was mentioned with the possibility of AMAS money for that. We have an AMAS meeting tomorrow, uh, and that was on hold, I'm gonna, I'm gonna remind Curtis Baker that, hey, we wanna be first in line for this planning grant, uh, but that's not gonna be available till after the 1st of the year, and he's the director, Curtis Baker, is, of AMAS. But I, I reiterate, um, it would be my, it stays my attention, I'll say it over and over, I mean, this is, this is, you know, we want the stakeholders involved there, okay? That's what's gonna make this happen or not happen. Uh, so, without a question, we'll, we'll make sure council's aware, I said at the table right at the beginning. Uh, the way I envision it, I haven't seen, I hadn't seen the application or anything else for this, but let's just say, and I don't wanna presume that we get this yet, you know, it's $50,000, uh, that, that, for a planning grant, but assuming we make our application and assuming we've been awarded, then when we have the first meetings, you know, I think it would be appropriate to have somebody from council, uh, naturally, the, the property owners are gonna wanna be involved, and, and, uh, we'll get all the horse and the water. Yeah.
I appreciate that, I agree. Um, and then on the, on the Tudor House, uh, with the construction of this building, that wasn't, I don't, I don't think that was part of the original vision, so, um, I wonder whether we've talked to anybody about state money, the state park, I mean, I, we got the seawall and all that, and, uh, I know with, uh, what's going on with the state house, Bill Rover's been helpful, um, and it looks like he may end up being our rep again, it's a possibility.
Ooh.
There's a possibility.
Oh.
Don't know, I would propose today, no. I would propose today, but, in any case, I know he'd be willing to help and help facilitate the communication, um, if, if this fits in, anything like that, I, but I won't, have to do it.
Yeah, no, I thought the same thing, we get the plans for it, we'll have to see whether that's, no, but primarily that, that 700 million, um, we're hoping to get a big chunk of that, as big a chunk as we can for the sewer part of the project.
Correct.
Um, but I, I think we'll open ourselves up for further grant money for the Tudor House, as we go along with some of the projects we've got coming in, it looks like we're gonna have the Cleveland Valley coming in.
November?
Next summer, um, an event that they used to hold at Stan Heeler, uh, and that they're gonna bring it out here. So, and those are the kind of things that, when we're down making a presentation with the African Community Foundation, that's what people are interested in, you know, what are you doing with the arts, what are you doing, you know, those types of things, and, uh, you know, that's, that's a money attract.
So we have to say more than October, though?
Yeah. More than the Pope, again, it isn't unbelieveable, but, yeah.
Two extra.
But everybody loves going, but, but what they're looking at.
I think that's all.
We wait, one, two, three. Anybody else? Old business? Anybody from new business?
Got a few things.
I don't know. Can't think of them.
All right, uh, you mentioned about the pumpkins, I'd be more than happy to help contribute to pumpkins, and that's been my whole theme on this first term, so, I appreciate it. If anybody else wants to help?
Pumpkins have been your whole thing over the...
No. There you go, I mean, wherever I can, back to the community.
No?
That's just another, I'd be more than happy to help.
I would, too. I'll be there.
Uh, another thing I have is, you'd said, you know, a while back about, uh, Ms. Swimmer resigning from the PAAV board?
Right.
Are we gonna have the discussion about what we're gonna do with that, how we're gonna fill that, is that something the council would like to get an application going and get some, some applicants coming in and look at that? How are we gonna do that?
I, I, I don't know that's necessary for, for council to be involved in, and certainly we could, but I, I certainly...
It's council's decision to select that person.
It's, it's resident, it's on.
Or it's ours?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. So, yeah.
That's what I was gonna say. Because what are you meant to say? I'd definitely be involved in it.
Yeah, that's, that's what I said. Hey, where's my red flag? So, I, I think the application process is, is absolutely a very difficult, we need to do that with all the boards.
When, when do you guys want to move forward this summer?
Tomorrow.
Or the day after?
All right. So, I just wanna bring up, and this, we, and that's a perfect opportunity, it's that, if anybody watching will know that we're gonna be having some, have an opening for the Personal Action Advisory Board. Uh, last thing I have is, have you guys ever heard of like a sister city?
Yeah, the guy from the Congo?
Huh?
From the Congo?
No, I was saying something in the States.
No, we had, we had somebody from the Congo.
Okay.
Contact us recently with, to see if we were interested in being a sister city.
Really?
But, yeah.
So, I, I was saying something in the States, for, we always, we can have multiple sisters. But there's New Franklin in Missouri, and I thought that maybe that'd be a nice start, that they got their roots back into the 1800s, and more of a farming community, little, little town square and stuff like that. Uh, what would be...
Kind of like us a little bit, I mean, we're gonna go with that, it's a good idea, really, the community.
Just get some exposure, get some, you know, others what they knew there, if, if that's something you guys are up for, I'd look into that and bring something back to you guys.
I agree.
And they give you really, especially if they're native, the native.
It is, it's in Franklin, Missouri.
So how do you feel about the Congo?
Is it New Franklin Congo?
I'm really kinda serious.
There's all breaking news.
I'm trying to think who, if, somebody, they contacted somebody and they said, "Oh, call New Franklin," so if I get more information on that, I'll let you.
Yeah, if somewhere, you look at your similarities, your differences, you gotta go, you know, there's, there's system back and forth, it's, you know, years long.
No, I'm not interested, it's a good idea.
Very good idea.
Um, I, I do have one other question that I forgot about, um, have we got any dates figured out for budgeting yet this year?
Uh, no, we haven't, um, but we blow within the next week or so.
Okay. We can talk to the staff, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Well, I, I just, I, I have a confusing schedule over the next month or so, so I wanna try to get the dates on our...
Isn't that very long?
Yes.
Yes.
I mean, we're, we've been talking to the staff about it to have them do the preliminary work and get ready for the meetings that we're gonna have, but you're right.
We haven't assigned the dates.
Yeah, we haven't picked the dates yet, we're thinking it likely will be October, we wanna get the two U's so that you got time for the three readings to finish prior to the end of the year, so. If what's us in the situation, we wanna have it at least by the end of November.
Okay, if it works, that it could be on Wednesdays that we have council meeting, and I know I'm in town, that would be a benefit, but doesn't actually, it's wrong about it.
Yeah.
Well, it is like a two-day event, isn't it?
Yeah, that's just it, yeah.
Yeah, it'll have to be on that day, I would say.
Yeah, no, that's...
In that, those weeks helps, helps, helps me.
And sometimes we just stack them.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
You know, one after the other.
Any new business?
Well, it's kind of, speaking of the budgets, at last year's budget meeting, we talked about the, uh, potential for having a, another pile truck, since we've taken on, over the last few years, we've taken on more than a mile as, you know, not a few years, but certainly became the city.
Mm-hmm.
The county roads became ours, uh, we used to have the county doing a lot of our roads, that switched over to a few years back when we took that over. Uh, the lead times on our trucks have gotten longer, uh, the equipment's taken to wear and tear, uh, we had some discussion on the budget, and it wasn't in the road department's budget, but that's, a lot of that's probably, you know, funded through the general fund and some of the other stuff, whether, you know, monies and stuff, but we talked about the potential to possibly have council have a discussion about how the general fund funding ended up up, and we're gonna get some pricing and stuff to us, and as we're discussing, I don't know if that ever happened or where we are with that.
Yeah, we had pricing, we took a stab at, uh, capital grant money, uh, and, uh, and it didn't happen. Um, that's, uh, when they were doing the operating budget, and it looked like there were gonna be some appropriations included in there, and actually, we had good support from our state reps, Senator Wagner as well, and then, uh, they just decided not to go in that direction. So we do have cost estimates on that. Uh, we haven't proceeded with, naturally, with an order.
And maybe if we can get, you know, at some point, it doesn't have to be tonight, or a little bit, just some, maybe some sort of an analysis of what our vehicles look like, what they're projected out for the next few years, and what we're looking at as far as replacements, you know, give us some good information to pull trigger on that, and whether we go forward or not.
Makes sense.
I think that's a good idea. Thank you. Any other new business? No? Any public questions or answers? No? Then I would ask, is there any new executive search?
There is none.
No? Then I'd like to say our next scheduled meeting will be October 4th, and late 6:00 PM, can I like to come and make a motion for a hearing?
I made a motion to adjourn.
We have a first and a second.